Ken's out there too, by the way.
Uh, yeah, Ken's.
There he is. He popped in. Thank you.
And then, okay.
Okay. Uh, let me just get this going and, uh, all right, that's good. Ken, are you there, Mr. Hashtag? Can you unmute so we can hear you?
Yeah, it went out and rejoined. Sorry. It took forever to get going here.
All right, uh, Chairman, all set.
Don't do it, Ken.
All right, ready?
All set.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Planning Board Meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted virtually. All board members, staff, and consultants will be participating remotely. The public will be given an opportunity to participate remotely through the advertised Zoom link or optional phone number identified in a public meeting notice. Members of the public should use the raise hand feature in Zoom or by pressing star nine if participating by telephone to indicate you would like to be recognized to speak. Meeting and application documents have been made available on the township's website through City Clerk in accordance with the public meeting notice. Applicants will be presenting remotely and will identify themselves before testifying. With that, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the two thousand twenty-one annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex, and posted to the township's website. Additional notice has been provided to communicate that this meeting is being conducted according to the governor's executive orders and pursuant to Public Law two thousand twenty comma C dash eleven, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically in pursuit of local finance notices recently established in the state of New Jersey. And with that, may I have a roll call of board members and the board and township professionals?
Mr. Wagner, Mr. Scobo, Vice Chair Julian, and Deputy Mayor Delkor are absent at this time. Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Here.
Mr. Pezen?
Here.
Mr. Senna Ramita?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mayor Lepani?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Kinser?
Here.
Mr. Maskey?
Here.
Mr. De Sessa?
Here.
And Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have consideration of meeting minutes. First up is the meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion to approve? Anyone to approve?
Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second Senna Ramita.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Senna Ramita?
Nate, you're on mute.
Um, here you go. I hear you now. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
And Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And next up, consideration of meeting minutes of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved, Ciccarelli.
Second Senna Ramita.
Okay, any comments from the board members? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Senna Ramita? Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, next we have consideration.
And get me.
I don't have you as eligible for that one.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Not eligible.
Feeling unwelcome?
Yes, okay.
We'll do better on this next one.
All right.
All right. Consideration of resolutions, we do have one this evening, CP East Frenzwick, Inc., otherwise known as Seisner, file number twenty dash PB dash zero five dash MSPV, as I like to nickname it, the Clock Tower. Is there a motion to approve or to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move that.
Thank you.
I'll second Ciccarelli.
Any comments? Okay, there are none, so roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Ciccarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna hold on the planning board business because we do have, uh, guest speaker tonight, Mr. Coit. But, uh, I just want to get through, um, business from the floor for matters that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide any comments to the board for matters that are not this evening's agenda, either raise your virtual hand or press star nine if you're dialing in by phone.
Again, this is your public comment on things not on the agenda.
Okay, I see none, so we're gonna move on.
All right.
No consideration of ordinances. And now just kind of getting back, um, I'm gonna ask the board if we can go to the application first before the presentation by Mr. Coice.
I agree.
Okay. I see enough heads shaking up and down, so we will go to this evening's application, which is the Hillsborough Township Board of Ed regarding Sunnymead Elementary School, file twenty-one dash PB dash zero seven dash INF. Uh, the applicant or the Board of Ed is requesting a review and recommendation, um, as required by state statute for the expansion and redesign of the existing parking lot to accommodate a hundred and twenty spaces, uh, where sixty-four are currently existing and a second drop-off loop, increase the site lighting, and improve the existing stormwater facility to be in compliance with local and state regulations.
Excuse me, Chairman, Frank Kinser, IT, I just want to make note that, uh, Deputy Mayor Delkor came in at seven forty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Frank.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, uh, so with that description, you know, we have, uh, some members representing or participating on behalf of the applicant, uh, Sean Walsh from Van Cleef Engineering, John McCormack of Dynamic Engineering, and Anthony De Luca, the Board of Ed Head of Buildings and Grounds.
So Mike Wasney, EI Associate.
Sorry, missed you there.
It's okay. We're the architects for the Board of Ed.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I don't know who from the, um, from the applicant would like to start.
Well, I'll just kick it off, uh, again, on Michael Wasney with EI Associates with the Architects for the Board of Ed. Sean Walsh with Van Cleef Engineering Associates. Sean will do, uh, really the presentation tonight. He did the key engineering on the project. Uh, John McCormack is available if there are any questions regarding the traffic report or traffic issues. And, uh, Tony De Luca is the Director of Buildings and Grounds for the Board of Ed. If there are any questions having to do with the operation of the schools, he can answer those questions. Um, I just want to, you know, again, reiterate that the purpose of this project is foremost, first and foremost, to improve uh, traffic and pedestrian safety on-site. In addition, uh, we're looking to improve the parking capacity. And, and with that, I'll hand it off to Sean.
All right.
Hi, Sean, let me, uh, just before you get going, I'll swear you in, okay?
Okay, great.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name and give your qualifications, please?
My name is Sean Patrick Walsh, uh, professional engineer from Van Cleef Engineering. Um, I have over ten years of experience at, uh, civil engineering and wastewater engineering. Uh, testified at, uh, four or five different boards at this point. Anything else?
And anyone from the board have any opposition?
Sean, could you just spell your last name for a court reporter, please? W A L S H. Thank you.
Okay, well, board members, fine with Mr. Walsh. Okay, so he had shaken, so Mr. Walsh, we accept credentials, and you may proceed.
All right, thank you very much. Let me put up my first exhibit, uh. Where does this exhibit go? One moment. That was open. I'm doing. All right. Eric is coming on here. Mr. Walsh, you want me to share it? Do you let me know? It's either way. There we go, sorry, I had a little technical. For a second there. There we go. Yep. Yeah. All right, you. Yeah. All right, uh, this is the existing conditions of Sunnymead Elementary School.
We're gonna mark this. Are we marking this as an exhibit?
Uh, yes.
All right, A one.
A one. I will email this to the board later than, they have copies of these already.
That's fine. If I mark them for purposes of the revolution, et cetera, Sean. Can you indicate for the record, uh, where the picture was taken or where it was obtained and who produced the exhibit?
We produced the exhibit, um, uh, Tim, Ariel from, uh, John McCormack. John, who, what was the vendor that took this aerial?
Yeah, this is a near map image from March of twenty-one.
Thank you, John.
Yes, you're welcome, Eric. Thank you.
Eric, do we need to swear in Mr. McCormick?
No, I think he's, you know, this is Mr. Walsh's exhibit. All he was simply doing was just indicating what it was.
Right.
Okay.
Um, existing conditions of Sunnymead Elementary School, sixty-four parking spaces, including two ADA compliant spaces. It's got a drop-off loop at the southern end, and then the buses come from the north end or the left side of your screen. Go around and everything comes out of the egress on the south end or the right end of the map. Let me pull up the rendering now. Stop this screen and share a new one. All right, this is the proposed, uh, improvements to Sunnymead Elementary School.
A two.
E two. By, uh, Van Cleef Engineering.
Thank you.
So we are gonna convert the ingress at the right-hand side to an ingress egress. We're gonna increase the parking from sixty-four spaces to a hundred and twenty spaces. We're going to, uh, completely redo the center parking lot. The parking lot on the right will be a mill and pave. Most of the driveway on the left will also be a mill and overlay. Uh, we're gonna increase, but the, the lighting, site lighting on the site is minimal. It's mostly for the sidewalk along the front of the school. We're gonna provide sidelane for the entire parking lot. We're gonna improve the stormwater to current regulations and, uh, replace the flagpole because that'll be demolished, uh, with the new design. The project's going to incorporate, um, about twenty-one thousand square feet of porous pavement. We're gonna force so stormwater basins. And the lighting will include nineteen LED lights. Uh, they'll have a mounting height at most of fifteen feet. There is a small section right here of the property that will have an impact with, uh, wetlands. We've already applied for a wetlands ten A, uh, general permit to for about two hundred square feet. We're gonna install some new pavement in the wetlands transition area. So minor, uh, permit application, we've already received administration, administratively completeness for the application. We're just waiting for comments or approval from the DEP. We expect those in by the next month or so. See, uh, we've also applied for, uh, DRCC permits, so our sediment control and, uh, the county planning board, we've proved received approval from the county planning board. We received comments from DRCC and, uh, Somerset Union County Soil Conservation. We'll have, uh, responses out to them, uh, early next week. Um, the only thing else I want to show you guys is one last exhibit. It's a turning diagram for, uh, fire trucks through the new layout.
A three.
A three. Again, this is produced by Van Cleef Engineering. All right, uh, we have two different paths, fire truck coming through here, traveling through, and coming out this egress, and then we have a fire truck coming through this way, coming down, and then looping around here and coming out the same exit. Plenty of accessibility for any fire truck. There was a comment from the fire chief asking to have, uh, the curves be mountable on the islands for fire truck accessibility. We're happy to do that, but the, um, the, the paths do show that the fire trucks can clear it, but, uh, either way. I guess at this point, um, I'm willing to go through the comments from the board and the engineer or however the board wishes to proceed.
We can go through the comments, please.
Okay. All right, um, I'll start with, uh, the board. We'll do the fire chief, and then we'll do the engineer. Does that sound good?
Yep.
All right, one moment. Rendering again. All right, comment number one, uh, application indicated whether or not any landscaping is proposed. It appears that four trees were removed. Yeah, four trees, uh, are right here. We are proposing to remove those trees. We don't have any, um, proposed new landscaping, but we are not against any recommendations from the board to install new landscaping. They would prefer. I'll move on to comment number two. Yep, please. All right, the application describes the site lighting and what if any impact the new lighting will have on the neighboring properties. Cellaring, uh, nineteen lights LED. They have internal shields, uh, provide lighting for, uh, the internal parking lots. Uh, all the lighting, um, doesn't extend beyond the park, doesn't extend beyond the property line. It should have no real impact to the neighbors. They have internal shields to, for any concerns of glare or anything like that. Also, the school's at a low, it goes down from the road, so it, it's not like these are lights are gonna be up above. They're gonna be lower, so. Uh, next comment, uh, Township standard requirement for non-residential parking lots calls for ten by ten, the ten by twenty-foot stalls and twenty-five-foot wide one-way aisles to propose a lot would have a mix of nine by eighteen and nine by twenty stalls with the twenty-foot, uh, wide aisle. The applicant should provide testimony regarding the adequacy of the proposed dimensions. Uh, because this is an existing parking lot, we wanted to maximize, um, parking with, uh, minimizing the amount of impervious surface. The existing parking lot has nineteen by eighteen, um, parking spaces. We have the nineteen by twenty for the, uh, parking spaces that are back-to-back to provide, um, extra space for no bumper overhang. And the, the existing one-way path here was less than twenty-five feet to begin with, so we thought in sake of trying to have as little impact as possible, using a twenty-four-foot wide one-way path would be acceptable, but, uh. Uh, the applicant shall provide status of any required DEP or DRCC permits and indicate what any impacts the project will have on the wetlands to the north of the project. Uh, we applied to DRCC. Uh, we did receive comments. There were, uh, some minor comments. They had some questions about, uh, soil infiltration rates and bedrock elevation. We need to do additional soil investigations. We did that. We have located the, uh, bedrock level at multiple levels. The basins are always at least one foot above the, uh, top of the bedrock as per NJDEP regulations. DEP, we applied for a general ten A wetlands permit, uh, minor roadway crossings for, uh, the area right here. We'll install some new, uh, pavement. Any other milling or pavement removal that we do in the transition areas is a non-permanable, permanentable, uh, activity. It's just considered general maintenance. And as the applicant should discuss, contents of their April first, uh, two thousand twenty-one letter claiming the exemption from the environmental impact statement. Uh, I, I won't go through that whole letter, but unless you guys want me to in detail, but, uh, just do the general uh, minor impact and the already developed nature of where we're working. We didn't see a need to have, uh, environmental impact statement uh, for this project. Any comments or questions from the board or?
Chairman, I have a question. I don't know if this is the right ask it because I don't know if we have, but, uh, I know that the slope of the terrain, as, as the engineer mentioned, is from the street to the, to the school.
Yes.
Um, and obviously, looking from a winter standpoint and snow removal, I would imagine, and Mr. De Luca's on the phone too, um, they would probably, since there's no ballards or anything I see, I would imagine they'd probably want to push the snow up towards Sunnymead Road. Then obviously you have your, um, your thaw would then bring the, the snow back towards the parking lot and towards the school. Is there any, is there a spot, is that a detention basin to the left of, in the, in there that snow could be put to prevent freezing thaw or anywhere else that possibly they could put snow to, um, prevent the, uh, the danger of the slip and falls of, of all the teachers and stuff that are coming onto the parking lot?
So, um, this is a basin here on the left. There's a basin here, and actually there's two independent basins, and this is also another basin.
So those are below grade of the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and all the, uh, parking lot all drains to those. Also, um, you know, let me pull up. I have a slightly better picture. Okay, um, that other rendering, I'll make that, uh, A four. Um, this actually shows the spotted area is pervious pavement. Um, that'll even have less impact for slip and fall, uh, because the whenever the snow melts, it'll go through the pervious pavement and not cause puddle.
Okay, so there's no ballards on the backside of that parking lot there, so they could push the snow directly into that detention basin?
No, there's a few lights, but besides that, they should be able to.
No, no, uh, stoppage like, uh, the, the little things that the chart, cars would go against it.
No, no wheel stops for that purpose, uh, specifically, so they could use it for snow storage.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just move on, uh, to the fire chief.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the fire chief, may I?
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, Sean, you mentioned you'd be well, the board would be willing to add some landscape. I'm just wondering to, uh, kind of soften the view of the parking lot from Sunnymead. Uh, can you, is there a possibility you can add some landscaping along the frontage?
Yeah, we can explore. I mean, there are obviously some gaps here. Um, we can sketch something up. We have a landscape architect. We'll, uh, try to get something that softened up and, uh, how it affects the view, so.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think, uh, the school has any argument against that. Let's keep. All right, um.
Mr. Chairman, or I have a question as well, or for, for a comment. Um, what, what was considered, um, down in the lower left-hand corner? There's a parking lot there that's now kind of cut off and isolated from that loop. And having had a kid go to Sunnymead, I know I go, I would go back there and park when the kids are playing basketball or, um, so what, what, what was the thought process for what's gonna happen down in that area?
Um, my apologies, um, that is a recreational blacktop area. So it, and it'll better kind of separate any road traffic from kids playing, so there isn't a commingling of, you know, kids goofing around and being near vehicle traffic. Now, you lose the little parking that you do have here, but we're doubling the size of the parking, uh, for the whole entire facility.
Right. Just, just, I'm just saying that people may want to, you know, unload their bags of basketballs back there. It's just, uh, creatures of habit.
Yeah.
Is there a curb there or is there something to prevent?
There is, uh, no curb, um, that all she flows into the, uh, well and then the drainage dish to the left. We could look at, uh, maybe a few ballards or something like that to discourage people and maybe some signage. It will be grassed. I mean, they're gonna have to drive on to them.
You're, you're humans. I've seen the parking over there at Sunnymead on a, on the night of an event. There's cars everywhere. Your, your, your detention basins are gonna be full of cars, so. Um, it, it just, like I said, I've parked back there before and, and I just noticed you're kind of cutting that off and, um, don't know if the school was, you know, knows that that's gonna happen or, uh, if they take deliveries back there and they're gonna have to change where their milk goes. I, I, I'm just something that might need to be, be checked out.
Tony, do you want to speak to that?
We are aware of that, um.
Why don't we? De Luca, can I swear you in?
Yes, you can.
Uh, if you raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And, uh, could you state and spell your name, please?
Anthony De Luca, D E L U C A, Director of Buildings, Grounds, Hillsborough Township Board of Education.
Thank you.
We do not receive deliveries on the backside. The deliveries are on the south side of the building near the cafeteria. We are aware of the playground being put there. Um, I like Sean's recommendations in regards to the bullocks to keep the people separated from our students. Um, well, this is based on safety. We are trying to separate our, our bus traffic and protect our children to the best of our ability. You are aware of our parking and our driving situations, many of you are at the school. We, this is all being designed for the safety of our children and our staff. We want to totally separate where buses drop off and where our children play or are active, but I do like the recommendation from Mr. Walsh in regards to protecting that area as I am aware, believe me, as the Director of Buildings and Grounds, that people are creatures of habit and they will park wherever they can.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
It's hard, I guess. I can go to the engineer's memo.
Uh, I can do that one next. That's fine. Yeah, let me go get that one.
There was fairly significant comment under.
No problem. Let's get to the. All right, um, site, uh, site plan number one, applicant is proposing nine by eighteen perpendicular parking stalls and twenty-four-foot, uh, drive aisles where ten by twenty parking stalls and twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot wide aisles are required by township ordinance. Existing parking spaces are nine by eighteen. Adequate number of handicap parking spaces have been provided to meet minimum accessibility requirements. As said before, we're just trying to match what was there existing and maximize what we could with the existing parking lots. That's why we use the slightly smaller parking spaces, which, um, these parking spaces work. The school hasn't had a complaint or any issues with them in the past. And the slightly smaller, uh, driveway aisle. A portion of the, the subject say includes wetlands and wetland transition area. The applicant should determine proposed work is subject to approval from NJDEP. Uh, discussed before, we're in, we already applied for a general ten A, uh, minor roadway crossings permit for about two hundred square feet. Uh, new pavement that we're gonna install along the, um, uh, in the transition area. And the other work that we're doing in the transition area is mill and pave or complete removal of pavement, which is a non-permanable um, activity, and it's always good to remove pavement out of a wetland transition area. Project is subject to the approval of Delaware Verge and Canal Commission. Uh, we have applied, uh, we, I know they've issued, they've issued comments. I know they issued to, um, to the county and to yourselves. We will be replying and those count to their comments and our response will, uh, incorporate all of your comments, theirs, and the soil erosion sediment controls. As stated in the memorandum, provided, uh, Fire Chief Marshall, Township Hillsborough, dated April fifteenth, minimal curbing shall be provided for the proposed curb drop-off island. So this island, just to be clear, is actually the press curbs. this island, just to be clear, is actually the press curb to allow to run off to travel, travel directly into the into the basin. Only this island really has curve. We are happy to make that mountable curve though, that makes the chief happy. Yeah, let's see. Twenty ten minutes for emergency vehicles should be reviewed to determine the accuracy of the drive aisles and cur radii for these vehicles. Exhibit number three, A three, and we're happy to send that to the engineer for the review. Avenue is proposing to remove four trees on site and the landscaping has been provided. As discussed earlier with Mr. Maskey, we will revise this to have some landscaping to replace what we have taken down and provide a little more coverage from the drive road to block the, well, to screen the driveway of the parking lot. We suggest additional do not enter sign and one way signs at the exits to the drop off area. Happy to add those. All right. Stormwater management, the total limit and disturbance of the proposed developments is approximately one point five acres and is a major development according to the NJAC seven colon eight. Reposed development will increase the overall existing impervious coverage by point three eight acres and thus will increase the existing peak runoff rates. The applicant has incorporated green infrastructure measures proposing porous pavement for water quality and quality treatment in accordance with NJAC seven colon A eight for proposed expansion of parking lots. The applicant has also proposed two stormwater basins with electric control structures for detaining runoff from the existing portion of the parking lot. We review the storm manager prepared by Banklyb Engineering and over the following comments. Applicant has proposed previous pavement for eighty percent TSS removal for the new impervious area and expanded parking lot. Water quality treatment via green infrastructure measures for at least fifty percent TSS removal is required for the existing parking lot. Yeah, we're the the porous pavement covers and treats meets all these water quality reduction requirements. The inconsistencies in the alley control structure sizes between the pond summary table and the site plans will be resolved in a response we send with revised construction plans to the engineer. My apologies for that. The previous pavement section construction detail should be revised to indicate a minimum of one foot of separation between the seasonal high water table. We did not find seasonal high water table in our investigation. We did find bedrock and we are one foot above bedrock. I will resubmit the store to report with the additional soils investigations and the plans will show on the profiles, the level of the bedrock against the depths of the basins. They just were.
Sorry. It was item three.
Oh, did I miss one? I'm sorry. That I don't do a subject to the approval of Delaware and Canal Commission, right? I thought it's.
That's first pay under stormwater man, the pond summary table should be revised to include the outlet pipe for the routing calculations.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. We we have revised that. And in our response with the revised report, we'll have those calculations. There we are, sorry. Number five, good, too many papers. The major development stormwater summary form should be completed by the applicant submitted to the board's file. The form can be found through the online link. We'll fill that out. To my understanding with that form, we need to wait for the construction to be completed because there's some as built information. Once it's completed, we will submit it to the form, will submit the forms to the board. Store manager operations and maintenance manual should be revised to include descriptions from the of the locations in the proposed store management basins along with the GIS coordinates. I'm going to combine this with item seven, the stormwater management maintenance manual should be revised to include details for maintenance of the proposed pavement. Porous pavement. When we revise the report, we're also revise the manual and submit it in our response. You'll get it early next week. Chapter report, traffic report analysis, impact analysis was prepared with following generally accepted practices. We review the report and we concur with the conclusions that the proposed site improvements will not have a significant impact on the existing surrounding roadway network. Does anyone have any questions about the traffic report or impact on traffic? Two more remaining miscellaneous comments. Soil erosion center control plans certification must be obtained from Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. Copy of the approved permit should be provided for the board's file. We're going to respond to their comments early next week. Once we get the approval, we will forward a copy to the board. And any other outside agency approvals should be provided for the board's file. When we get the wetlands and DRCC, and I will forward a copy of the Somerset County's approval to the board. And then that was, that was it.
Any board members have any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Right?
So Sean, was there any consideration to put a crosswalk stripage where the other throughway is where the traffic goes toward closer towards Sunnymead Road? Yeah, so if you fold up the these crosswalk striping closest to the building and go straight up, keep going up, right, right, keep going up.
You are here?
Yeah, in that section between the parking, the other parking area and the second area, just to slow potential traffic for safety purposes.
We did not, we did not consider that.
This might be a safety benefit to do that, to slow the traffic down and people are parking, you know, they close to Sunnymead Road and there's there's traffic moving through there. Potential danger.
Yeah, I will, I'll review with Mr. DeLuca and anyway, we might need to shift a few things around with the parking lot, but to try to still maximize parking spaces. Do you want to correct Tony?
I'm sorry.
I said to Mr. DeLuca, just.
I can speak with Sean. I I understand what you're saying now that he put his print there. We can definitely take that into consideration. We do have something similar to that at the high school.
Any other questions?
There's none by the board members. Take a motion to open up the public.
So moved Santa Maria.
Second piece.
Anyone with favor?
Hi.
Hi.
If there's anyone in the audience, please raise your virtual hand. We got a couple that already went up, so.
All right, I'll take it from here, Chairman. Again, when you unmute it, please state your name and address for the record, spelling your last name. And again, these are questions for the witness on this application.
Good evening, Maria Janucik, J A N U C I K, seven twenty East Freck Avenue, Menville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block eighty six, lot three, two one five five, Camp Lane Road. I heard the the witness spoke pretty pretty quickly and some of it was hard to catch. He said, you said something about having to do revise the construction plans?
Well, in in response to some of their comments from the board and from DRCC and Somerset Union County, there will be some revisions to this plan. Nothing significant, but what you see of that rendering is pretty much what it's going to look like. But like, for example, when they asked for some additional ballards, I would add ballards here. One of the basins is going to change slightly. A few inlet structures are going to have slightly different elevations, but nothing's nothing materially very different.
Okay, actually, why, why is this project, why, why are there so many parking spaces needed? It's almost, almost double what's there now.
I'm going to refer that to Tony, Mr. DeLuca.
We have, we have, we have, do not have enough parking at this school at this time. We have people parking along the driveways, parking along the curbs. They are actually parking on the grass at Sunnymead and backing in to the road to get out. Also, with the with the increase in drop off, we need much, much more drop off space for our students and we are safely creating a bus loop that separates our students from the traffic, the parent traffic. So right now we do not have nowhere's near enough parking and also we do have a lot of events at these schools now, which do require additional parking.
Okay, so you have a lot more, is it because you have, because you have a lot more students there also?
I don't believe it's the increase in students. I would say a combination of parent drop off and increase in staff and parents in the buildings when we are not in a COVID protocol. We have a lot of visitors. We run a lot of programs in our elementary schools, so we do have a lot of visitors who visit at our schools on a daily basis.
Okay, is there, is there a plan to to enlarge the school? Is that why also something that you're considering and why you need more parking spaces?
There was no, there was no plans at this time to enlarge this school.
Okay, regarding the wetlands, how much, how much of the property that's going to be used to expand the parking lot? How much of that is wetlands right now? And I'm sorry, I'm on the telephone, so I can't see a rendering.
Oh, I'm sorry, no problem. There's nothing in the wetlands. There is in the wetlands transition area. She's about a fifty foot buffer from the end of the wetlands out and it's about two hundred square feet.
So fifty feet of of wetlands buffer is going to be covered?
Two hundred square feet of the wetlands buffer.
Okay, so so how much buffer is left for those wetlands?
There, almost all of it. It's a little hard to explain. It's it's a very, it's a small sliver of the buffer because it extends the entire length.
Now, and why do you, why do you need approval from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission?
We're in the zone of their authority. Any major stormwater development project in this area requires their approval.
So so is there a possibility that there's going to be increased flooding because of this project?
Absolutely not. The stormwater that'll come off of this site is going to have a smaller peak flow than it does right now.
Okay, but there's going to be more impervious surface, right? Where's that water going to be going?
The water will be held within the basins and infiltrated through the porous pavement. There will be more, but the way we design the stormwater basins, it reduces the peak flow and the flow, so it'll come out slower to to eliminate any flooding concerns.
And how many trees are going to be removed?
Four.
How many?
Four.
Four trees?
That's it.
Did you mention something about something being not permissible in regard to the concrete or something? It was difficult to hear, understand some of the things you were saying.
Oh, my apologies. There is some milling where we remove the top two inches of pavement and then overlay to refresh in the pavement. It's a, it's just maintenance, like you don't need a permit to do that work. That's what I was saying.
Oh, so you don't need a permit, not that it's not permissible to do something?
Poor choice of word on my, my part. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just, I was just wondering. Let me see. Okay, now you're also saying that you want an exemption from the, from an environmental impact statement?
Uh, yes.
There's not going to be any impact, but not much impact, but you're going to have more impervious surface. You're going to be taking some of the wetland buffer and you don't need to get an environmental impact statement, even though that's going to be happening?
Uh, yeah, we, there is a township ordinance that requests environmental impact statement when you have some development sites, but in that ordinance, it also lists rules and exceptions, and if you meet those rules and exceptions due to the small nature of your project, you're not required to do the environmental impact statement. And in the letter I expressed to the board, I felt that this project was small enough in nature that it met those requirements.
And you said that's, that's, that's contained in an ordinance of the township?
Uh, yes. I don't know the ordinance number off the top of my head. Maybe Mr. Maskey can provide that.
Okay. All right. And so what kind of, what kind of permits do you have to get from the, from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
We applied for a general wetlands ten A minor road crossing permit.
So that we, you've, you've applied for that, but you haven't gotten a response yet?
We applied in March. We got a response that we are administratively complete, so there's no missing information. Or they didn't see any outright concerns and now they are evaluating the permit application.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gulliford, please state your name and address for the record, spelling your last name, please. You there, Susan? Susan, we can't hear you.
Well, she's still out there.
Okay, now.
There you go.
Ah, gee, you'd think I'd have a hang of this by now. Susan Gulliford, G U L L I F O R D, Hunt Club Road. I want to do a follow up on that parking capacity increase from sixty four to one hundred and twenty. That seems like an extraordinary increase. I was wondering, I had a few questions. How is the number reached? Because applicants just don't pull a number out of a hat. And that lower left small parking lot that you were discussing earlier, a little square behind the school, looking at the exhibit on the screen. How many spaces are being lost or deleted from that small back lot?
I believe that lot may have had ten spaces. There was, it had some marked spaces, but it was also fairly gravel, like a gravel road people parked on. We wanted to eliminate that, to try to separate traffic from children playing. And then Tony, can you talk about the one twenty number or?
The back parking lot that Sean was speaking to was a paved parking lot. Adjacent to that was a stoned area which we were using for parking, which housed approximately forty five cars. Because we expanded with millings along the driveways only because we could not stop parents from, parents and staff from parking there. We had parking vehicles, parking approximately forty to forty five cars on a daily basis, parking on the driveways and on the edges of the grass. This did not include visitors to the schools. The number came up with this, we came up with what we're trying to accommodate parking for the events that we we plan and do have at these schools after hours and also to eliminate any parking on the front lawn. Front lawn parking on a good, on a spring day, there'd be thirty five cars and they would pull directly into the grass, parking against facing the trees and then backing out on the Camp Lane Road. We had, we have staff being dropped off at our schools. So it was more of a conversation with what the needs would be for our after school activities, our visitors and also staff parking and a lot was decided and we talked with the principals and the business administration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Chairman, I see no others.
Last call for questions of this witness's testimony. Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, thank you. I'll share my screen.
Any other witnesses, Mr. Walsh?
I know, that was it. We are, I think I went over all the. We are, I think I went over all the comments and everything else.
Okay. So is the chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, I will give one more last call to the audience. If there's any questions or comments regarding the application in general, that one of the other professionals that are with us tonight that may be able to answer or address.
Seeing none in the public.
So a motion to close to public.
So moved, Mayor Lepani.
Thank you.
Let's take a second.
Thank you, long favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So to the township's professionals, any final comments, questions, thoughts?
None here, Mr. Chairman.
Eric, so was Brew anything?
Yeah, nothing really, I, I just wanted to add that the applicant stormwater management measures should, should be, you know, fairly adequate, fairly good to control the stormwater on this site, but they will require additional maintenance. Those stormwater basins and even the permeable pavement, because that can become clogged up over time. So it needs to be swept and, and kept. So there will be maintenance to keep the stormwater management measures in, in good working order. But I, I think they're adequately designed. And the only other thing I saw as far as landscaping is they do have some large painted islands of asphalt. If, if they were converted to landscaped islands, it might provide a little bit more greenery. But again, when you have vehicles and large vehicles, sometimes those, those curved islands get, get trounced on and, and damaged. But, um, you know, if, if they could eliminate larger areas of pavement that aren't being used by traffic, could provide some additional, uh, impervious area.
Well, yeah, we can look at that, that's for sure. I think I know where you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, those islands on the north side coming in on that, yeah.
Chairman, can we get an indication from the board that they will have a, the procedures and practices in place to ensure that those items are kept manageable as to the porous pavement related items for the stormwater?
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, we will maintain it. What would, I'm not sure, would you want to rest something in writing from the board stating that we would do it or?
No, we just want, it's on the record that the board understands its requirements, and there will be practices put in place.
Absolutely, we will take in it.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you. Final questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Eric, what's our next action?
A motion to approve the application with the agreements, conditions, and entered into by the board.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, okay. Any last questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Emmick?
Emmick, yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Senna Romita?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay, thank you, school board. Thank you.
Now a motion, now a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Want to see if Coys was still awake.
Well, exactly.
That would be figured.
Look at that, uh, backdrop.
I need my sunglasses.
All right, now we are going to go back to planning board business. Presentation by David Coys on our title, "A Journey to Zoning in Hillsborough Township", commemorating the 75th anniversary of the adoption of Hillsborough Township's first zoning ordinance. Anyone?
And David was there, I understand.
Yes, time traveling, that, that's how I did most of my research.
Yeah.
All right. Where is yours?
Thank you, I am just doing the screen share.
You want to indicate, Mr. Coys, not that everyone doesn't know who you are, but for the record, who you are?
Oh, for the record, yes, well, first off, can you see the screen right now?
Yes.
Yes, we can, thank you, David.
Okay, thank you, greetings, hello, everyone. I am David Coys, I am the Business Advocate, Sustainability Director, Deputy Zoning Officer for the Township. I am a licensed professional planner. It has been some time since I have presented before this board, so it is nice to be here.
Does the board want to vote on Mr. Coys's?
Which one?
You know, how big is that business card?
Yeah, 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 extra, costs a little bit extra for those. I, I went out and got some titles and some additional qualifications since you last saw me. Uh, do I have to be sworn in? I hope not.
No, no, you're not, you're not giving testimony, David, you're merely making a presentation.
I, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, to speak here, so.
Would you like to get sworn in?
No, no.
I'll let Michael do it.
I'm fine, all right, so I'll get started because I'm probably the only thing that is in your way from enjoying the rest of your evening. Uh, as everyone knows, this is the 250th anniversary of Hillsborough. And I think, I think it only makes sense to talk about some of the planning and zoning accomplishments that the township has had in its time. And what better way to do that than to talk about the very first zoning ordinance that the township adopted? And it just so happens during the 250th anniversary, it happens to be the 75th anniversary of the very first zoning ordinance being adopted. Uh, for those of you who are keeping score at home, currently, the zoning ordinance that the township has is contained within Hillsborough Development Regulations Ordinance, and that was adopted in 1976. And that would have replaced the zoning ordinance that we're going to be talking about a little bit tonight. Before we get started and before we start talking about Hillsborough, just to kind of set the stage a little bit about what was going on at the time. Uh, in terms of zoning, the very first zoning ordinance that was actually adopted was in 1908 in Los Angeles. It was not comprehensive, it was actually in select locations of the city. Prior to that zoning ordinance being adopted, it was actually illegal for industry, believe it or not. At the time, before zoning, there was different kinds of laws that were put into, to place or kind of classified as, as nuisance laws. And Los Angeles wanted to start to select locations where industry would grow, and they started to do that. It wasn't until 1916 that it was the very first comprehensive zoning ordinance. And that was actually done by New York City. It was a whopping 316 plus page ordinance. And that ordinance contributed to what the streetscape started to look like in New York, where skyscrapers started to taper off. And that whole strategy was to try to guarantee lighting, quality of life and air for people to try to prevent buildings being built so large that they would actually cast shadows over, over entire neighborhoods. In 1926, the United States Supreme Court, Euclid versus Ambler, and that is where the Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of zoning. So just to kind of set the stage there, now going back to Hillsborough, this is a map from 1873 and actually shows what Hillsborough looked like at the time, it's a little bit larger than it is today. And it was divided up into, into different little districts, some neighborhoods that, you know, people still identify with today. Some of these areas are post office districts. And the, the town was made up of these different locations, but not all of these locations. You know, there were some crossroads, there was, you know, a tavern, a church, a general store, a blacksmith, you know, the essentials located at some of these places. There wasn't really a true center of commerce in, in Hillsborough. Because Hillsborough was a farming community. And at this time, and if we actually go to 1910, the 1910 census shows that the population in Hillsborough was 2,313 people. And it was a, you know, a very sleepy community. And they, they didn't know what was coming next. In 1912, a company now known, its name now known in infamy, the Johns Manville Corporation actually relocated from Brooklyn, New York to Hillsborough. There was a community in Hillsborough known as Harmony Plains. And Harmony Plains, again, was just like the rest of Hillsborough prior to 1912. It was a sleepy community, there was a schoolhouse there, it was mostly farms. There was a couple railroads that started to go through it, which ultimately led to Johns Manville wanting to locate in Hillsborough. And at that time period, it was, it was almost like Amazon selecting a, a location nowadays. It was a really big deal that a company like Johns Manville was selecting Hillsborough. Uh, Johns Manville had been an exhibitor at the World's Fair. You know, it was a known, it was a known corporation at the time. This is actually the schoolhouse in that part of town, and this is in 1900. Uh, this is before the massive building boom began. And this is, uh, this is a classic, it actually fit inside of that school at the time. And what Hillsborough didn't see happening, and again, they, they didn't have, there wasn't any rules, there wasn't any regulations to, to control the, the development at the time. The form of government was, was still township committee like it is today, but it was actually three people. And what was common in that time period when people wanted to subdivide, they would go to the township committee, and they would present a plan, and it would essentially be approved. When Manville announced they were coming to Hillsborough, it started a massive, rapid growth that no one saw coming. The real estate companies posted in newspapers, you know, as far as Western Pennsylvania to try to appeal to the workforce out there that was working as miners and presented Manville, Hillsborough, as, as being a really great place to, to come, that this would be a state of the art factory, and that it'd be good paying jobs and, and cheap land. And what you could see here, they had free train rides, they were trying to bring people there. They had actually proposed that that entire area was going to have a build out of 12,000 people. So really, really, really incredible. Uh, this is one of the early plans, this was just 1913, a year after Johns Manville already located there. On the top right side, you could actually see some of the buildings of Johns Manville. And you could see some of the, some of the subdivisions. And you could get a, get a sense of just, you know, how much, how, how different this was from what Hillsborough was at the time. This is another section, just a little bit west of where I just showed you. And it just shows the massive layout. There's, there's so many of these plans that we still have, have in the office that, that shows what Manville would eventually become, and these, these lots were all laid out. Uh, there was no building code, there was no subdivision regulations, there was no sanitation rules. Uh, there was essentially no services. Uh, this is just a picture that shows a little bit of, of what, of what this area started to look like. Uh, the rapid development of Manville was really quite incredible. So to go back here, so essentially what happened is 1912, Johns Manville is there, and by the time we get to 1920, the population of Hillsborough has already doubled. The types of services that were now required, improvement of streets, sidewalks, schools, lights, uh, put stress on the entire, entire system. Hillsborough already a sprawling town that had lots of, lots of roads and responsibilities, really, really struggled in knowing how to allocate its resources in order to, to meet this demand. Ultimately, um, not being able to keep up with the services for the schools is one of the things that's credited to why Manville wanted to break away from Hillsborough. In 1929, there was an election, it was unanimous, it was all the residents that were living in this area had a right to vote. And, uh, and they decided to leave Hillsborough and form the borough of Manville. What's really incredible, if this area stayed a part of Hillsborough and we got to the 1930 census, the population of Hillsborough would have essentially tripled in, in only just 18 years. So we get to the 19, well, so 1929, we can't talk about that without acknowledging that Black Thursday happened, the start of the Great Depression. And so as you can imagine, development slowed down. Uh, Hillsborough, as I'm reading all the research, and this just happens to be my opinion, uh, from a historical standpoint, it, it seems that, you know, they took a sigh of relief. Okay, Manville is its own borough, we can now focus on the rest of Hillsborough. Uh, there were still no regulations that they decided to adopt. It wasn't until we got to the mid 1930s, late 1930s, that they started to realize, oh no, let's go. We, we need to put something in place to try to curb some of the development. And by 1938, Hillsborough Township actually adopted its very first building code. Uh, it hired its first inspectors, actually had two building inspectors at the time. And they had realized that, um, the building code wasn't enough, that they really, they really needed to do more. The reluctance to getting a zoning ordinance was, a little bit was, was cost at the time. They didn't know who, who to turn to. And, um, you know, here, excuse me, I'm hitting the wrong buttons. Just go back one moment. And so you can see here, I have some quotes here, so E.L. Lindstrom, committeemen, uh, you know, talking about learning the lessons from Johns Manville and, and industrial corporation coming in and the type of impact they had on the community. And they really wanted to learn from that, they really wanted to try to preserve and keep the character of being a farming and, and a home community. In terms of, of who to turn to, they actually turned to one of their own. Uh, so C. Elliot Smith, who was C. Elliot Smith? Uh, he is actually the hero of this little story here. Someone that I believe has been forgotten to history for the most part. And my hope from this presentation is shed a little bit of light on his contributions here. So working with the township committee, he was actually brought in, and he had offered all of his services pro bono. He was an NYU professor of real estate and land economy. He taught out of the Commerce School at NYU. He lived in Hillsborough, his family had roots to here about five generations before. And C. Elliot Smith actually presented for the township committee. Township committee was very impressed with what he did. So by 1940, they put everything into action to actually create a planning board that would also act as the zoning commission. Here's some names, a lot of them are going to look familiar to you, either people, last names you know, or street names you've driven on. And C. Elliot Smith, uh, really fascinating quote here. And C. Elliot Smith, really fascinating quote here. And, you know, he's basically setting the stage for, for what the township needs to do going forward. However, war happened. Pearl Harbor was attacked, and it, and it delayed things. And that was definitely one of the challenges. And without going too much into it, I think everyone knows here, you know, the two major depots that located in town. And what was really interesting about that is, you know, the town's fathers at the time thought a lot about what, what would that mean for the town's future. It's very interesting seeing their current concerns regarding that. So before going exactly to 1946, they had a lot of things that they had to do, even though war, war was occurring. They, they still met, and they still put things in place. They realized there was a number of things that they had to do before they got to zoning. They needed to improve the building code. They needed to adopt a subdivision code where there would be standards for what the lot sizes would look like. They really talked about all the concerns that they had of what they ultimately wanted to get to. They wanted to plan out a community that would be, you know, have room to breathe. They wanted to make sure that the houses were not on top of each other, that there wasn't issues with fires. They wanted to make sure that sanitation was okay, that the lots were large enough for that. They wanted to make sure that the homes were going to be substantial. That they wanted to make sure that people weren't converting their garages into homes or up on the mountain, that people weren't turning structures into summer homes. And they, they really had a vision for the community. And, you know, this quote down here, and I want to read this one because what was really fascinating when I came across this, and when we think about Hillsborough, Hillsborough being one of the best places to live in America, and when we think about the culture that we have, where we're striving for innovation and not just being regular, but being exceptional. And it's really fascinating to see the roots of that culture and how deep they go. C. Elliot Smith said the following, "The purpose of the ordinance is to make this township one of the best planned communities in the state, if not the country." He declared that zoning is merely the application of the golden rule. "Do unto others as you would have on do unto you, to use the property." C. Elliot Smith, Chairman, Planning Board, Zoning Commission. So May 22nd, 1946, the residents attended the meetings. Not everyone agreed, of course. Not too different than today. But overwhelmingly, the people that attended one of the hearings really liked what they were hearing. And so you could see that headline there, zoning law is adopted. This is the first zoning map that the township has. And it's actually the same one, I believe, that was presented, that was actually framed and presented, and actually is in the conference room, conference room of the Planning and Zoning Department. You could see here, that's a fairly simple map. It's the same one that's behind me. This evening, you could see that there's three zones, industrial, business, and then all others are residential, agriculture. Now, C. Elliot Smith is credited with preparing the plan. He's credited with doing the concepts maps, the concept maps, and giving them to the township engineer to, to put it to print. C. Elliot Smith is credited with doing the amendments for the, the building code. He's credited with the sanitation code as well. He also created a draft master plan through this entire process. And the very next thing that was going to happen after 1946, they were going to move on to the master plan and get everything, get everything going from there. This is just a zoom in of the zoning map, and you could see the industrial areas were strategically located, where the railroads are, the darker black marks, those are the business districts. Again, a lot of those were the crossroads of these little unincorporated villages. So 1946, it's passed. And in no time, Hillsborough has its very first litigation involving its land use rule. And so, present-day Hillsborough Promenade was actually the Emily Yeoman Farm. And it was actually used as an airfield a little bit prior to this time period. Wasn't technically an airport. Universal Aviation approached her and actually made a deal to convert, convert the airfield into a working airport. The whole town flipped out. This was very controversial. Ultimately, it was denied, and this went all the way to New Jersey Supreme Court, where the ordinance was upheld. And the work that the planning board did, and C. Elliot Smith and Township Committee adopting everything and working very closely with that group, they made something strong enough to be upheld in, in New Jersey Supreme Court. Then, unfortunately, tragedy struck. And the architect essentially of the planning and zoning endeavors in Hillsborough tragically died. He died in his sleep, and there's a really heartfelt resolution that was done by the Township Committee very shortly after this. And essentially, just to kind of wrap this up now, the, the impact that C. Elliot Smith had, his legacy, and what he did was really incredible. And I think it, it's even more so in that the township didn't adopt a master plan until 1965, 66. There was a number of zoning ordinances that were changed between 1946 and that time period. But essentially, some of the planning efforts were put on hold. And I think a big reason for that was with the death of, of C. C. Elliot Smith. And however, you know, that zoning ordinance went really strong for a really long time until the municipal land use law was adopted. And what became the, the common trend was taking all of your land use regulations and putting them together like Hillsborough has today. So to recognize the 75 years of the first zoning ordinance, and that this planning board has its roots back to the very first planning board that was created and met in 1940, which is, which is really incredible. I think a lot of people might not realize how much history that Hillsborough has. And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I went a little bit over time. But, yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Just one question was, Mr. Bernstein, were you defending the township back then?
Yes, it's a nice continuation. I've been doing this for 75 years. I look very good for, for my late 90s.
Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah, I think so. Not so good for my early 60s, but pretty good for my late 90s. Haven't changed.
I am attempting to give the screen back to everyone, but I do not see the button.
Nice job, David. Very good.
Oh, thank you. Oh, there we go.
I took care of you, Dave. No problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Give him a clap.
And there is a Smith Court, by the way, which I thought was pretty cool.
Yeah. It's, it's actually pretty informative stuff. I think we should, we could put that on our, on our site for people to read. I think that's, that's good history right there for our 250th. I did, there's some stuff I didn't even know a long time, so that's pretty good.
I didn't even get into the really nerdy, fun stuff that my wife had to yell at me.
I'm sure.
They're not going to be, they're not going to be interested to know how many different uses there were, or, you know, that. And I was like, all right, tell a story, tell a story, a story when they're about people, right? And there's a lot of people that have been forgotten to time, which is really, really interesting, but great records, by the way.
Good job.
Thank you.
So you can add all that in the director's cut, you know?
Yes, yes. Well, I guess in order to get this on the website, I guess you're going to put me to work. I gotta put the pen to pencil. It's one thing to put some slides together and look at the notes and kind of spew off a little bit here and there. It's another thing to put it down in a very organized way, but I'm excited to do that. I mean, when I first started working for the town 10 years ago, I was just fascinated with that we had a zoning ordinance dating back to that far. And I just wondered why, how, how did it happen? Who did it? You know, what were the reasons? And it was just always something I wanted to get around to. So, so, yeah. So thank you so much.
Well done.
You can share this with the counterparts in Manville, so that they know their origins.
Yeah, I don't even know if they know that we have all the, all of their subdivision plans still, which is, which is really incredible.
Sorry.
So David, I take any questions from your audience. You did not lose anyone.
Wow. Oh, wow. Okay. Yeah, I'd love to.
Wait, and, and there's a hand that went up.
Losing Gulliver.
Of course, of course.
My wife out there?
Let me guess, who? Ms. Gulliver, what would you like to ask Mr. Coys?
No, I want to add something kind of in memory of my grandfather. He was a miner in Nanticoke, and family lore always had it about those trains being sent out to encourage the miners, saying, look, you'll get out from underground, and you'll be able to work above ground. And many years ago, I wrote an essay called From Black Lung to White Lung. And if you follow obituaries for the Manville area, you'll see a lot of people born in the Nanticoke area that died in Manville. I just wanted to add that for Ernest Arthur Maliko. Thanks.
Nice.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Cohen.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank David. And I think C. Elliot would be very proud, as I am, because I can recall when David first came on the scene. And he's always done himself proud, and he's always done Hillsborough proud. Thank you, David. Good job.
Thank you. Good to hear your voice. Been a while. Thank you.
Go, I see chairman.
I don't see anyone else. So David, again, once again, thank you. I think the Township Committee could add a fourth title to you, historian?
All right, new business cards. Here we go.
Meritus, yeah, there you go.
Adding from the backside now, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. So with that, we're coming to the end. Just reminder. Mr. Maskey, do we have anything for the agenda on the 27th?
No, we do not. Business meeting is an empty agenda. The next regular meeting is June 3rd, and we do have an application for that night.
Okay, so do we want to keep the 27th open, or do we want to cancel it?
You can cancel it.
Okay. So can I get a quick motion to cancel the meeting of May 27th?
Move quickly.
Second. Five-way tie. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Emick?
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pezen?
Yes.
Mr. Santa Armita?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Serrachi?
Yes.
Okay, with that, David, anything else?
That's it for tonight.
All right, motion for adjournment, then.
Motion adjourned.
Hashtag second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. See everyone again on June 3rd, so have a good Memorial Day weekend.
Stay on the line.